The draft LDA is a product of pretty intense negotiation over a long period of time. And I wrote in spook the entire council my communications with, about the LDA. I felt that with you, I think there were certain critical issues that council, in my experience, wants to cover on. And I communicated those to Mr. Gary, who did begin to develop this council, in the three major kind of issues. Again, aside from the give and take on the business terms, which I think are kind of reflected in appraisal, which we can talk about later, the first one is that, given the complexity of this deal, the LDA doesn't, as written now, the draft LDA doesn't reflect all the ultimate terms because there are other things to be worked out. But, and I can just agree on that with the developer, Mr. Gary, that the council will have the chance to approve future agreements entered into the show to the LDA, including obviously bond authorization for the garage, design build contract, construction of the garage, including the GMP price, which I think will be very critical, again, to determine later, terms of parking lease, which the developer pays for use of designated spaces in the new garage, and section 6A agreement, which is affecting the rule tax. Again, all of these things were, and I thought that, given the complexity of the document and with more emphasis on some of the nitty gritty business terms, that could be made more, I just want to make the ask so clear, if they agree to that in concept, then we will, we will add clarifying language, none of which is business deal, between now and the next meeting. The second major issue was the use restrictions, as demonstrated in any of his remarks, that concessions that are made in the LDA are products, to some extent, the fact of, well, building something that the market wouldn't otherwise allow. So, we want to make sure that the use restrictions, not just the residential use, but the high rise, which premise of the additional costs associated with a high rise building are remain a requirement, in terms of the use of this car. And then finally, similarly, the remedies in the agreement, there are some affirmative obligations going forward, more of the things mentioned is, you know, to maintain inside the lease, to maintain the park, so on. And there are not, is not a reverter of this agreement, and I understand that was a key part of the negotiations, there's no guarantee, so, and this entity is likely has no other asset, has no other assets other than the property it was purchased, that I felt that we need to make very clear, and we may be in there, and I think it is, just because it's important, we need to make absolutely clear, that those affirmative obligations are, will be secured by a lien on the property sold. So, in effect, it's like, if they don't make payments, they don't maintain the park as promised, it doesn't, it's affecting the appraisal, that will basically pay their estate taxes, or a remedy that will follow them. So, that's, again, I don't, I think there's agreement in concept, that those of you who agree to the agreement, it's pretty complex, and just wanted to make sure that these two issues are covered.
Thank you. Counselor, that.
Again, thank you, Mr. Shea, but one, just in terms of where we're moving forward, because you've listed these three different specific items, is that, particularly in terms of the first item you mentioned, in terms of the sequencing of these various transactions moving forward, these things that happen post-disposition agreement, so to speak.
Yeah, so.
Are you able to propose language that articulates that more clearly within the context of the LDA itself?
Yes, we may, well, they need some changes, since we made my general comments in the slides to begin, but I think it could be, again, it's agreement in concept, just want to make sure that, in the body of the agreement, it's clear as it takes.
And I guess that that's, from what it sounds like, is that, again, we will, we relate to all three, though there's specific language that's probably engaged in that, and that we'd be able to really have that specific language highlighted out before us, and correct what else to be written.
And some of this, Mr. Davis, he said, well, that's already in there, it may well be, but I just, it's, it isn't as clear as I'd like, or maybe I need to fish it out. But, again, I believe there's more, but, obviously, there's no way, it's pretty good concept.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. You have more comments?
Mr. Gary, in short. Yes, I agree generally with everything that Counselor Shea just reported. As I mentioned in my comments, introductory comments, we have been working diligently with him to remove any potential ambiguity from the language that isn't the LDA, or may not be the LDA, LDA that we're willing to fashion with him over the course of the near term. I also, I'd like to mention that among the materials that you will find in your package is a fact sheet with respect to the public improvements. And when you go through that fact sheet, it's important to recall the comments that I made when we presented the LDA initially, which is that we didn't want to focus in on the garage, and the tenants of the garage, in terms of making it clear that the vote for this LDA, approval of this LDA, isn't the only vote this council is going to make on some of the provisions that are contained in the agreement. So, for example, the provision that provides for, under the new law chapter 355 of the Act of 2016, that provides for the developer, the designated redevelopment, to construct the garage and other public improvements, is still subject to approval by this body in terms of its appropriate authority, its approval authority and its appropriate authority. And the fact of the matter is that, in the fact sheet, it relates to all the public improvements that may be contained in this LDA or in the follow-on LDA for the other pending development of the LDA, see, at 1500, handoff screen, that those provisions that you approve in the LDA do not become operational or effective until you subsequently approve those public works and authorize the appropriation of funds to fund those public works. So, we are going to endeavor, with Mr. Shea, to make that very clear in the LDA, that when you vote to approve this, it's not automatically voting to approve the garage, that still is going to require an additional approval from this body and maybe additional proceedings, other proceedings, that will support your consideration and approval of those projects.
Thank you. Counselor, that.
This is just for clarification, because this is, you referenced that act, it was that some provided with this specific sequence of part of that, in terms of.
It was provided here in your package for each counselor, as well.
Oh.
And as well as, if you have the ordinance committee meeting, you can notice, it's the first page of your packet, and then page three begins, the document construction says a lot of bullet points, how the public, the armed partnerships.
And this document was attached to the email that I sent to the clerk, as well as each individual counsel.
So, we have it in hard copy before us this evening, it was also sent to the attorney in the press today. Do anyone else have any other comments at this time? Stay on the side with Counselor.
Good to see you, Mr. Gary. Quick question, while I'm just sort of thinking through this, feel free to kind of interject at any time, but I know that you had discussions, subsequently, we talked about this, this disposition agreement, and I feel like there's a, there's a, there's a projection to keep a clear line between the parking garage and this end disposition agreement. And I can understand that, and I can understand, you know, you continuously saying that it will be involved throughout, you know, the parking garage discussion, but are they not, in theory, hoping to be built around the same time and sharing the same foundation?
Yes, that is, that is absolutely right.
So, conceptually, as I sort of think through that, I get it, you know, you have this financial model, specifically to a 48 unit, you know, high-rise structure, and you have this parking garage, but realistically, we are talking about, you know, sequencing, and we'll be having to make it at the same time, because the reality is, right, we're going to lose parking, and we're going to leave parking.
All of that is absolutely true, and we have talked about that before. The, all, these two first, first two projects, as well as follow-on projects, and as well as the general overall vitality of the downtown, is reliant upon the construction of a new garage.
Today, provided, provided that we get, right?
You're best right.
The garage.
And without, without the garage, this, this new project won't go forward, because it needs that garage. The economy scale is provided to us by enactment of the new law, similar to the home loan conditions, what approved, allows us to more efficiently make certain that those two projects are sequenced promptly, and indeed, under the terms of the LDA, the developer, if they are, if they are hindered from closing their monuments, of course, they're still obligated to proceed with the construction of the garage. And if I've misstated that, Mr. Davis will correct me, but what we're trying to do here is to make sure that we've advanced all these projects, but the central ingredient is the garage itself, and the pertinent improvements that provide access and address to that garage, as well as utility relocations that are involved. And however, that doesn't mean that the council, by voting for this LDA at this point in time, with that agreement in there, as I said, it doesn't become effective until this body acts separately and distinctly on the approval of that project and being funded with it.
In a degree to all of that, I guess we're only sort of having a disconnect. You know, I see what you're saying, basically, the financing on the residential projects, essentially, that, you know, the garage, if we're all looking at the overall picture, I can completely understand that, but I think where I'm having a disconnect is, like, why are we not being shown more proof of concept of that garage? You're right, maybe on separate tracks, but you start, you start construction side over there, there's going to be an immediate need.
Well, we have, we do have timelines with this, Counselor. We can show you, show you the graph. The garage is currently under preliminary design, so that's going to take some time. Garage is under preliminary design, the apartment complex, in this case, is not under design yet, they're not going to design it to final specs until they have their tools, number one, and they, and number two, of course, is financing. One would say financing should be number one, but the precondition for them to get the financing from HUD is to get approval of the LDA from this body. That's what they need to go to market to get the finance, so that's the critical, important first step. And once they do have that, that document approved, then they can go get their financing. Much of the obligation is, as it relates to safeguards, is pre-located in the beginning. If they don't get their finance, I think the project doesn't go forward. It's as simple as that, and I'll restate that, because I stated that at the last session. So, it's critical for us to get them to a point where they can engage, and they know financing authorities are going to engage with them until they have the end disposition agreement in. Once they start that process, and meanwhile, we are proceeding with the design of the garage, because whether that project goes forward or not, we believe, and we will make the case with this body, that the city needs that garage.
Correct. So, I mean, in hearing you sort of talk through that a little bit, my understanding now is we're more than just a concept, in some, some form or sense, we are a part of the kinds of paper that pertains to the garage, which, in my mind, got.
We're putting, we have, we have a design firm, Desmond Associates, the leading firm in the United States for designing garage, we need them to advance with the design to a point where we can estimate a cost.
So, we're not there yet?
No, we're not there. This, this is really called preliminary design, we are looking at being in a position to have that by March, so we are very vigorously pursuing that, so that we can have two things. One, we can have a preliminary design, and two, we can have a, an estimated cost. And with the approval of the LDA, in this instance, with Mr. O'Connell, since his firm will be the construction manager, we want to engage the contractor that he wishes to employ to build his project, to also will be the same contractor building the garage, and we want to merge those two efforts together, so that we're getting preliminary design, design and build with value engineering, so that it's, it's the contractor that's going to build it, is giving us input, and that's going to produce a better project, it's going to be more efficient in terms of getting it constructed.
I understand why, why we're approaching that one, so I guess I would just assume that the number of spaces in aggregate has not yet been determined.
Not with that analogy, it's as we indicated, 650 to 700, we are talking about different design approaches.
I know you say quality materials, longevity materials.
Absolutely, all of that is taking place, we've had discussions, actually, over the holiday, to discuss the cost analysis of one construction approach versus a different construction approach, in terms of the longevity and maintenance of a facility over a period of forty years. We are also, as I said in testimony here before, and, believe me, I'm very excited about this aspect of the project, and looking forward to presenting it to you, when we develop it to a point where we can present it to you, but a key element here is not just to build a standard garage, that we unfortunately see, saw with the Ross garage, and as you see with municipal garages, you know, all over the country, it's not just here in Massachusetts, certainly not here in just Quincy, but to create a place, a gathering, a civic place, to create a, a place that is going to enhance the vibrancy of the downtown, not just be a halting dark building that people are afraid to go into. It's got to be every bit as architecturally appealing as the buildings that we want these developers to build, you know.
Agree to that, I mean, in this entire, you know, I know you're not also, you're not only an employee at City Quilte, but you're also president.
Yes.
Same thing said for everyone sitting here this evening, but I keep going back to the garage, because, just like you, me, and everyone else, not everyone, but a lot of folks I interact with on the daily days, the common questions are issued around traffic and parking, parking and traffic, and I say this every single meeting, because I hear about it so much, when it comes to parking, you would rather have it and not need it, than need it and not have it, so shoot for the sky with the, with the numbers, because as you know, if folks can't adequately park in a garage, they're going right to the neighborhood, and the neighbors would not sign up to that.
And I know you agree with that. Absolutely, absolutely.
But as I sort of think through this, and I know you're facilitating meetings, so I guess I'd just ask, did you want to stick with Mr. Gary, or did you want to kind of roll that?
Your time.
Counselor, just point and board with the guy. I'd also like to observe, I do wish to speak with Mr. Shea.
That's such.
I just.
Where's yours?
Thank you, Counselor. I just had a question for our Greg.
Yes, sir.
Please.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate the presentation on the dip I had thrown in early, just request some information. I didn't know that Arcade P was handling all the numbers pertaining to revenue expenses in concert with the bill, so I guess going forward, if you had to just deal with it directly. But I'm seeing the presentation now, it just takes me sometimes a little bit longer to connect things on the fly versus, you know, if I had some time to process it, so I'll do my best, and if I'm asking a, you know, an obvious question, please feel free to stop me, but what I was trying to get to the bottom of, and I think the answer to it in the slide three of the presentation was, we have essentially, correct me if I'm wrong, about $41 million in debt off, or whatever, in the debt, in the debt going back to 2006. A chunk of that, maybe, you know, a quarter is going from a band to permanent bond, right? So, we have to generate essentially maximum revenue to serve our already pre-existing debt, and if I, I don't remember this specifically, was the bands, the original bands, 35, 35, how many you can hold in, how long it's along?
Typically, that's what they are, they'll got bands that you have under the special legislation, you can take them out for ten years, and that ones that are out, out there, so it's only off after they're ten years.
So, essentially, if I'm hearing correct and interpreting the data that's presented this evening, is our part in trade risk, you know, quality economies, enough to know that, you know, interest rates will, if you get, go up, I was doing my deeply reading the other day, and, you know, the pundit that I heard was predicting too much interest rate hikes in 2007, and so I understand timing, and I understand, you know, opportunity cost, so hearing that, if you have up to ten years to essentially build these bands, do you then turn and advise the city to maybe look at making some of these bands and putting them into longer-term bonds now to hedge your interest rate risk?
No, I would keep them, 1% bands that you're running now are far less expensive than going into any even a 4% bond or whatever the market.
Right, but once you come off that ten-year cycle, for lack of a better word, you bear what the market says?
Exactly, we're rolling off, and that's whatever the market will bear at that point in time, and that, the interest rates, though, as I understand it, the city will be facing, and one is, it's a, it's a question of what general market rates are, more than municipal bonds at those heights, but it's also has to do with the city's credit rating, and control, and one of the things that others could probably, just as line counsel, is I'm impressed better than I am, is that, you know, the city's progression of continuing to build this tax base through the incentives, the partnership that they're going to invite investors for downtown, has been beneficial to the overall perception that bond providers have for the city, and for the debt you get. Because the $41 million in bonds that are out, the bands that are outstanding now that you're rolling on, there is sufficient, if relevant, to cover that debt service, both from bands and when they roll over in a higher interest rate case, and the assumptions that we made here. Our model predicts all of that. In order to accumulate the bond more through the end process, to build a garage and any other future additions, that is what's going to require new growth, rather than just the appreciation of the existing things that are generating tax revenue now, it's the new stuff that's going to come out of the ground as a result of that garage, which I'm going to take for it. And so, the model that we have, it's a large complex model, it looks at every piece of property within the district, so we've got it from 2006, every year, every piece of property, and tracks evaluation, tracks the use, the code that's on there, and tracks the assessment and tax revenue from that, the take of a property. So, every year, there's a reassessment, as there just was, going into fiscal year 2017, that has to be adjusted, and so what we do is we go back and meet with the assessor, we get the new tax records for fiscal year 17, what happens, we have parcels that merge together, parcels that get split up, some change, use, so there are these changes that can be made in the bowels of the, of this financial model, and then that becomes the basis for then forecasting out, based on all the assumptions we have going into the dimension, there's existing projects, we all know, that are either permitted or planned to be permitted, there are those that people have talked about, which are a little firmer than that, and then there's the more high dependent growth that was talked about from the urban design exercises, and that. So, the model incorporates all that, makes those assumptions, and then forecasts out that tax revenue going forward, and then uses that to say how much debt can be supported as a result of this increase is going forward.
So, based on your presentation, I think the slide three shows this county year 2016 probably generated $200 million in revenue, right? And what I was wondering, which is really just what I was trying to get to the bottom of, and I'm on what I did, like, in terms of debt service that we have, and are already pre-existing bands and soon-to-be bands, current bands, soon-to-be bonds, I mean, how much are we meaning in teaching that? I remember the conversation, I don't know if it was just, might have been a year ago, that, you know, valuation is probably valued for up in the downtown, and employees raising the revenue coming in from the office, but are we, how, how far above beyond are we with our revenues as they relate to our?
See, the current revenues that are coming in today are sufficient to cover the existing debt service, and we've known forecast that service as the bands roll off.
Do you know what sufficient means specifically?
It's more than, it's, I don't know how much more, it's more than enough to cover that.
Just 50% more than?
It's not that high, it's, it's enough to cover the $41 million under the assumption that we have used with, you know, debt service coverage that we built into the model, so it's, there's not, the existing debt, the existing revenue, if, if revenue, or any change, if any new revenue coming in, is sufficient to cover the 40, the debt service on the 40 million going forward, but not sufficient to cover the additional 40 million dollars.
Probably whatever it is that drove.
And that's going to take more than growth.
Myself, like, I know everyone's sitting around, I want nothing more than this downtown to be wildly successful, and the way that my brain is wired is I'm just all analytical, and I want, you know, read numbers, understand numbers, process numbers, and challenge, so, I mean, I understand what you're saying, our closure growth, rightfully so, and I also understand the concept of economic risk, right, that a developer takes quite a, when they step up and quit building 15-story, 48-unit residential, residential complex, you know, my thought is, you know, as the city council, how am I putting the taxpayer in this disposition posture of mitigating potential pitfalls, which no one can, you know, it's not, it's not an absolute safeguard for you, it's like what's happened on the Dr. Dan, we've all lived through several, several of them. What I'm wondering is, you know, if things shifted, tonight, you can't predict that, and then we had a parking garage, and a correction in the residential market side, would we be in a position to, a young model show, and we'd be in a position to essentially service the debt on a non-revenue term, parking garage at this point?
With, with the O'Connell project and the other known development that's occurring, is going to occur in the downtown, it's in the purpose, either permitted or planned, and it's planned to be coming out of the ground, that adds a significant cushion to the, the additional debt we take on. I don't have the numbers in front of me, I understand, if you have to share, if you go over the model, you can have three or four hours to do that, it's, it is pretty complex.
Sure.
But we try to take, if we're building this model, and we're moving forward, we take. But we try and take, building this model, we're taking a conservative approach in terms of the assumptions, the interest rate assumptions, the rate of growth assumptions, and evaluation assumptions moving forward.
But I'm assuming you stress test those against all, worst case scenario, that you have a, well, I'm moderate, extreme.
But again, you know, the whole idea of what you're dealing with today, you know, the issue at hand is really taking steps as soon as possible with these catalytic projects while the market is, while there is development interest, strong development interest out there, take the steps now necessary to make that foundation, get it in ground, get that, basically get that garage in there because that is going to stimulate additional development moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor K.
Thank you. If I could to.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't need you, Greg, thank you. But Bill, Pam, maybe start with Pam.
Sure. Hello.
I just wanted to kind of go through the appraisal with you to some degree. So, the assumption is, again, just as a foundation here, fifteen stories can't be built in the marketplace without incentive, right? So, forty-eight units between two stories and then two stories apart.
Two stories apart, and then four stories of residential.
Okay. And then twelve units per, what's the square footage of that wall park? I mean, I'm not expecting.
Call it twelve hundred square feet per unit, give or take. Gross.
Now, there's no requirement, if you look at the URDP, isn't that plan essentially say that it's possible for you to develop in the downtown district without parking as long as you make a compensation towards the shared parking goals of the entire district?
You can't build a project that doesn't have parking. You know, whether the bylaw says you can build without parking or not, the market would require parking.
How much parking?
The estimate from a market point of view is a little over a one per unit if you account for some amount of visitor space, but it's essentially a one per. And the BSC plan is predicated on that assumption. In addition, there's a little bit of surface parking that's associated with retail that's in their plan. So, between the two, there's, you know, there's, I think, sixty spaces for the forty-eight units plus a little bit of surface parking to satisfy the retail requirement.
I got the impression, maybe mistakenly so, that that was a generic footprint of a residential building, the twelve units per floor.
It is calibrated to fit the size of the fee parcel.
Right.
Because, of course, if you were a market rate developer, you wouldn't want to build your building on top of parcel, a parcel under which the city is building a parking garage, for example, or needing to run a utility relocation.
But you're taking a, like a cookie cutter approach to just say, okay, this is what's something.
It's a hypothesis.
Right. Okay.
It's definitely hypothetical, exactly.
But you're using this hypothetical, you're saying sixty parking spaces, but that hasn't been the practice in the downtown development thus far. So, that's one of the assumptions and hypotheticals that are being baked into this appraisal that I'm having trouble getting over. I mean, if you look at West of Chestnut, how many units is West of Chestnut built? Do you know?
I don't know.
Hundred and sixty. Hundred and sixty units.
Some.
There are not a hundred and sixty parking spaces there. So, clearly, things are being developed directly abutting this, that don't require the ability to park itself. Cliveden Street parks itself, is my understanding.
Yes, that's true.
And Mechanic Street, there's no way there's enough parking for the number of units going in that building either.
I'll confess, I don't remember how many parking spaces there are, but I do know that the appraiser, when they looked at the comps, validated whether or not the parking requirement for the comps was consistent with what was being proposed by the BSC plan. Now, if we can go back and I can find you the data for the parking requirement for those other five projects, just so that you can.
Well, it's the URDP. I mean, it's the URDP and it's a zoning. The zoning for downtown is governed by the URDP. We separated the downtown out and said, follow the URDP, that's the governing document. In my recollection of multiple reiterations of the URDP, is that you don't have to park yourself. You either park yourself or you pay into the shared parking fund. That was, that was my understanding. I don't think that that's changed in anything. So, Cliveden.
I'm not sure.
Cliveden parks themselves so they didn't have to pay in. West of Chestnut doesn't park themselves, but they waived that requirement. Mechanic Street, I don't know the details of that particular project, but it doesn't park itself. I mean, they just put in the parking lot last week, at most, that's going to hold, and I'm being generous, thirty, thirty cars. I think it's, that's far less than half a space per unit. So, at the outset, I'm not disagreeing with you that maybe in another place, in another zone, that isn't Quincy Center, operating under the URDP, it takes sixty spaces to park that forty-eight unit building. But I don't think that that's a realistic number.
Well, again, I think that the appraiser has taken care to try to match up the parking requirements with the adjustment of the comps and understand that whether you actually put the parking spaces on site or buy them out, the effective equivalent from the perspective of their impact on land is the same. You know, whether you build a space for thirty-five thousand dollars, that's about what it costs to build this, build a space, thirty-five to forty thousand dollars all in with soft costs, or whether you have another unit of thirty-five or forty thousand dollars per unit, the equivalency is, you know, it's pretty, it's pretty close. So, again, I can, I can go back to the appraiser, if it's helpful, just to get a better explanation for how he has made adjustments or not, or considered the parking attributes for the comps.
Yeah, I'd be curious.
Just so that we're satisfied that there's a, you know, there is equivalency there.
Apples to apples is best.
Yeah, apples to apples, exactly.
And when you're looking historically, so you look at, you know, an appraiser's job isn't to say what I think will happen in the future, but it's to say, this is what I think the current value of something is based on what's happened in the past. So, when I look at the downtown Quincy and I say, what's the value of the current, or what's the situation that we can expect of the current land use, based on historical use, I look for, in this case, what's been permitted. I look at Cliveden, I look at Mechanic Street, I look at East of Chestnut, and I look at West of Chestnut. Cliveden parks itself, Mechanic Street does not park itself, East of Chestnut does not park itself, and West of Chestnut does not park itself. And again, I don't know about Mechanic Street, but East of Chestnut and West of Chestnut didn't have to pay into the shared parking contribution. So, it wasn't thirty-five thousand dollars a spot, it was far less. I think one of the things that they had to do was provide a parking space for a zip car, and that was considered their contribution to shared community parking. So, it's not thirty-five thousand dollars based on, it might be in the future if we're projecting, but based on what's been actually accomplished in permit, there's four projects, residential projects that have been permitted in the downtown, and three of which don't park themselves, one of which does. I don't know what the cost it was to park on that site.
Yeah, I mean, as I said, it's important to make sure that the economics of what we're comparing is equivalent, and I confess, I don't know enough about exactly what the parking arrangement is for these projects, which, where we don't have a land transaction that goes with them. The comps that have been used, we know traded and have attributes that we can analyze. We know with West of Chestnut, there's, the economics of that project are, shall we say, maybe not market either, just like the fifteen-story O'Connell project isn't market either. So, I think getting to the bottom of that particular one might be more difficult, it's not safe.
But that's exactly my point.
Can't try, but I think what we're trying to do here is to make sure that the city is getting a market rate equivalency as if they were going to the marketplace without incentives, without anything other than the zoning as a foundation and what the market would need in order to be successful. And again, I think it isn't just zoning, so it includes a need to consider what the market would have to have to be successful, and the, some evidence of what the market would require is baked into those five land comps that we have. And again, you know, I think we can ask the appraiser for more clarity on how he has treated the issue of, you know, check differences in the way parking is being handled on those five sites, to be satisfied that, you know, we've got, we've got the right set of adjustments, if you will, to account for that.
But, you know, your point, your point about that, that you're not sure that West of Chestnut and East of Chestnut are borne out by the market is exactly my point. Where you, with this appraisal, you're comparing it to something that you would hold it to a standard that no other development downtown has been held to because there are incentives. So, we're comparing, you know, trying to compare an incentive-laden deal with a non-incentive laden deal, but nothing's being done in the downtown, or has been done in the downtown thus far, without built-in incentives. So, regardless of the incentives.
We have five land sales that show the very kind of development that we're talking about, that, you know, were required in that twenty-fourteen, fifteen timeframe to build, you know, the same thing, stick over podium with parking, parking below. And so, you know, I guess the point here is that we may not have something on the Hancock Lot yet to demonstrate that a downtown deal on that site is, you know, is doable without incentives, but we have certainly examples in other, in other locations that aren't too far away to show that that's what it's likely the market would want to do. And again, I think there's, there's a need to sort of translate from the specific circumstances that we're trying to manage, you know, feasibility obstacles that we're trying to manage via this agreement on the Hancock Lot itself, that have to do with the intrusion of publicly-owned improvement sub-rate, for example, while we're trying to incent building for them that's different than what the market would otherwise do, and translate, trying to translate those circumstances to a pure market rate deal, as if you were not helping to support a project and using other attributes that the city has, other funds, et cetera, that the city has at its disposal to help prop those projects up. We're trying to, the appraisers are trying to, for lack of a better way of putting it, trying to run it pure, without considerations for whatever supports the city might otherwise lend to this.
But you know what, that's unrealistic if every single project has been propped up in a way to say, oh, no, let's say it's a four-story building, but two of those stories are going to be parking. To me, that matters because it goes from being a forty-eight unit residential building to being a ninety-six unit residential building that piggybacks off of parking that everybody else is piggybacking off there. And I'm not saying that's the best way to do it. I've criticized both of those deals in the past because that's the way it's been done, and I don't think that's the way we should do it, but why would we all of a sudden say, well, we're going to value this asset, we're going to look at it like this is going to be the first project we ever hold their feet to the fire? They're actually going to do everything that we say, and this aren't URDP, because that's not what's going to happen, under no circumstances. Is suddenly we're going to hold people accountable for something we've held someone else accountable?
I guess from an appraisal point of view, it's sort of, you give it with one hand and you take it away with the other. So, as I said before, you could, you could take, you could create a new hypothetical, you could have a different hypothetical that says, no, we're going to get the developer to contribute to construct the parking elsewhere, you know, on site.
No, you're saying create a new hypothetical, you're saying, use the three projects that have already been permitted, use those same standards and apply that here, because that's not what's being done. You're saying you can have two stories that are.